At this time, I'd ask that you at least put your smartphone or cellphone in the vibrate mode. I'll call the meeting to order of the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners for the month of June. And at this time, we'll stand and we'll ask Commissioner Langley to do the invocation and Commissioner Evans to do the pledge.
Let us pray. Intertner God our Father, we are grateful and thankful for this very moment in time. We thank you for allowing us to assemble here in this place. Touch our hearts and minds by all the concerning your people that we may make wise and prudent decisions, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would entertain anybody that has a conflict of interest within the items on the agenda tonight. Any commissioner have? Here none, we'll move to item number D, the agenda approval. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
To move.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, okay? All those in favor of the agenda, raise your right hand. Okay. At this time, we'll move into items for presentation. And Lisa Woolard, Lisa, you're first. That's okay.
Come up, come up, come up, come up, come up, come up.
You can, you can move that way.
So, I bring to you the Governor's Volunteer Service Award winners for Beaufort County for this, for 2018. I don't know how I got this job, but somehow I became the in-between person between the Governor's Office and the great county of Beaufort. And Beaufort is so blessed, I think my thing just went out, Beaufort is so blessed with the number of people that have, are doing things in this county that really make up where we live. Of those winners, so I'm going to introduce the winners and their sponsors, and then, Frankie, if you can come around, if you can present the certificates and the pins to The first winner is Edward Ambrose, and he is with Eagle's Wings. He is volunteer superlative, and we are so excited. And he really brought his posse with him. You can see all these shirts that have the Eagle's Wings on them. Next is Bill and Jane Winhardt, and they are with the town of Bath. And finally, we have Emily Albera. And Emily was actually a medallion winner. And so, there was 25 winners across the state, and so she was one of 25 that got to go to the Governor's Office and be presented with the medallion and the certificate. Emily is fighting the fight against Alzheimer's disease for our county.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We salute each one of the winners of the volunteer awards. Item number two is the Health Department 2017 State of the County's Health, Janelle Lewis.
So, having technical difficulties, you just get to listen to my lovely voice tonight instead of look along with the awesome PowerPoint. But I also did this last year, and so what I'll try to do is kind of point out where we've improved from straight from community health assessment to each year when we do the SACH. We always report in our SACH about our top leading causes of death, which our top three are still cancer, diseases of the heart, and then we have our respiratory diseases, followed by unintentional injuries, and also diabetes. The community health assessment, which was last done in 2014, and if you aren't aware, we're currently doing the 2018 now. If you haven't done your survey, please complete it by June 30th so that your voice is heard. But the CHA identified four priority issues which kind of guide the Health Department in our programs and our actions and everything that we do. And that's chronic disease, which includes diabetes and heart disease, then you have weight management, nutrition, obesity, and then we have cancer, followed by access to care. And the important part about access to care is it is all-inclusive and includes mental health as well. So, for the first issue, chronic disease, heart disease and diabetes, Beaufort County Health Department, this year, some of the programs we've done is our Diabetes Prevention Program, which focuses on those at risk for type 2 diabetes, which, in all honesty, there's like a short survey that I would bet a lot of money on that 75% of us are at risk, even if it's BMI, I don't know about you, but my BMI's gotta come down some. But BMI, if you've had gestational diabetes, if you have family history of it, all those things put us at risk. And so, the cool thing about Diabetes Prevention Program is it's trying to prevent it from ever getting to the stage of being diagnosed with type 2. And we actually had two completed classes in 2017, and those classes consist of about 15 people each. And then Diabetes Self-Management is for those that have type 2 diabetes. So, with type 2 diabetes, it's a management of, you can't make it go away. And Diabetes Self-Management really helps tailor to individual cases, I would say, with diabetes and helping them best manage it. For some, it may be dealing with their eating habits, for some, it may be increasing their physical activity, for some, it could be better managing their medications they're on. But the goal is for them to lose weight, because we know that with diabetes, it's better to, and easier to manage when you lose that weight, as well as hopefully delay some of the onsets that diabetes has with them. The other priority issue is our weight management, nutrition, and obesity. So, we did have our medical nutrition therapy, which is another individualized program that really works with individuals to see what their day-to-day life activities are and how that can incorporate healthier eating habits to better manage their lifestyles. In general, we had about nine social media and three print advertisements and articles ran specifically toward nutrition, but it's a part about everything that we do. If we go out to talk about cancer, a risk factor is the nutrition. If we go out to talk about Alzheimer's, nutrition. Nutrition really encompasses everything that we do, so even though it says nine, I would say it's about in every little thing that we do. Health Education Department took part in about, I'd say about 20 health fairs, and at each of those, we're always promoting the physical activity, nutrition, hopefully decreasing some of the risk factors such as obesity, because it's a high-risk factor for so many diseases. And then, we also held our Family Fitness 5K, which was September 23rd, 2017. We had about 150 runners that came out. It was a glow run, so individuals really enjoyed that. But we tried to bring out families to, and promote increase in physical activity, and we know that the best way to do that is passing down generation to generation the importance of physical activity and moving. Priority issue number three was cancer. We did several cancer topics such as colon, skin, and breast. We do a lot of our cancer efforts with the Cancer Center in Vida in Beaufort, any of their events they have where they're promoting, what we can provide as well. The Health Department has the BSEP program, which is Breast and Cervical Cancer Prevention, which is a nice resource for those that might not have some of the same resources or capabilities that others do. So, we have a really good partnership with Vida in making sure that we can get as many people covered as we can to make sure that they're getting the screenings, mammograms, follow-ups as well. And then, we also did an infographic, which is a very easy way to read, I guess, I'm gonna say, easy way to read some of the big numbers that you see put out there all so much. The community really responds positively to them, because I guess like kids, we love pictures, and it helps make the facts a little bit easier to understand. Priority issue number four was access to care. October 6th, 2017, Beaufort County Health Department implemented our Healthy Living Clinic. And some of the following services, comprehensive exams, disease management, sick visits, CDL, physicals, and employee wellness were added for our Healthy Living Clinic. So, the SACH also likes to focus on new and emerging issues that happened in 2017. AWIC, so our WIC department, but the, we moved from paper to electronic benefit system, and we were actually, Beaufort County was a part of the pilot group and one of the very few. Vida in Beaufort, and they're still in the work of it, but hospital expansion, the new emergency department is a big and new emerging issue, and then changing the lead law. So, there was a certain level prior to with, if a kid had a certain level reading, that they would be tested and more follow-up, and because of that lead level, lead level changing to a lower level, we're gonna see quite an influx of kids that are going to need follow investigation or remediation following the lead exposure. So, then we always follow up the SACH with our 2017 reviews, so everything that's been going on. And our big one, obviously, is our 411 Health Fair. 2017, we had 200, and just to give you a ballpark, we had about 50 more people attend this year's to 250. It is always growing, it's always encompassing more resources, we call them vendors, but they're resources, which encompasses anything from emergency management, the preparedness side, to all your healthy eating. We have our cancer center out there, we have Vida in Beaufort, we do preventive screenings. From our 411, just that day, I think we were able to enroll 15 people into DPP, and about three people were notified of a high A1C, which they were then referred to our DSME program. Our 5K glow run, I already hit on that, so I won't hit much more on it, but we did partner also with the fitness centers around here, so hopefully families that came out that were interested or had a passion for family fitness and the importance of it, hopefully they found a connection in the community to find some outlets and some other ways that they can increase their physical activity. We also have our walking trail at the Health Department, which we encourage and try to get families and anybody to come out there. It's open from dusk to dawn, and it's a .5 track, nice little figure eight. September 21st, we also held our opioid forum. As y'all know, it's on the rise, it's a huge issue, most of y'all were there. County commissioners, government officials, law enforcement's EMS, mental health, public health, it's a huge issue embarking us all, and we were all there at this forum. And the opioid addiction, oversell, and overdoses were a lot of the issues that were discussed, and there's several task force now that are working on it to hopefully combat some of these issues. The identified needs and resources were identified, were actually passed along to the VC 360 Behavioral Task Force, and that's who's working on it currently. We also have a program called Faithful Families, and we had one church that completed that this year, Harvest Church. It's a nine-week session, again, we know we talked about obesity and healthy eating habits being a huge asset in the community in regards to if we could really increase those, that we might see decrease in diabetes, we might see a decrease in obesity rates. And Faithful Families is a program that incorporates healthy lessons, but we also get to cook with the families or the individuals in attendance, so they're not only getting information, they're getting hands-on, and hopefully going home and cooking those foods and eating them as well. Another big thing that came this year was the smoke-free public housing, so all public house agencies must be smoke-free in there by this July of, July 20th, 2018. So, myself, and we actually partnered with tobacco, our regional tobacco in Pitt, and we came out to the HUD, all the different sites, and we gave them the information of why it's important to go smoke-free. A lot of them learned not just about the first and second-hand smoke, but third-hand smoke, how the residue that's left in the walls and the people after them, and their family members, that maybe they can't smell it, but their kids, their grandkids, their visitors, their friends, everyone's affected by it whether they know it or not. So, it's a huge positive thing that HUD's going smoke-free. And then, we also, we didn't want to just say, hey, it's going smoke-free, good luck with that, so we also promoted our tobacco cessation classes, hoping that we could provide a resource for them to hopefully encourage them to at least cut back or quit. The last few things were accreditation, which is a huge thing. May 19th, 2017, the Health Department received their accreditation from the local North Carolina Health Department Accreditation Board. And by receiving accreditation, what that does is assure residents of Beaufort County that the programs that they're receiving, the services that are offered, they need a high level of standard public health services, so they can rest assured they're in good hands. And then, the last is Beaufort County 360. So, the VC 360 received the status as a nonprofit. And then, the VC 360, if you haven't heard, has several task force, and those focus on behavioral health, healthy eating, active living, homelessness, and literacy. And so, those four tie almost directly into our four CHA-focused areas as well. So, they're always tied, they're always working off one another, because we never want to create another aspect that has nothing to do with what is a need in Beaufort County. And then, the BC 360, one of their, I would say memorable things this past year was they contributed to the support and establishment of the Open Door Community Center, and that was in a response to homelessness. And then, the HEAL created and distributed a county resource guide map, which had physical activity outlets and locations of healthy eating resources. Are there any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Or comments?
You did a great job.
Thanks.
Thank you, Janelle. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing on the budget. Need a motion to go into the public hearing? To move. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Brian, you want to?
Yes, sir.
Have your comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a hearing to receive comments from the public regarding the proposed fiscal year 1819 proposed budget. This is the budget that will sustain county operations for the next fiscal year. North Carolina General Statute 15912B requires that before adopting a budget ordinance, the board shall hold a public hearing at which times persons who wish to be heard on the budget may appear. As you recall, the manager's recommended budget was presented on May 14th of this year. Budget workshops were held by the board the following next two weeks, and changes were made to the manager's submitted budget. On page 29, you have a summary of those changes, you have a revised manager's budget, which lists the changes that were made by the board during those work sessions. On page 31 of your agenda, you have the budget ordinance that's been put together by the Finance Office that lays out those changes that you've proposed, and lists that budget ordinance for the next year. The budget is balanced, and it was produced in accordance with the guidelines and requirements of the Local Budget Physical Control Act, and should be adopted by July 1. There any questions? We'd be glad to answer those, but this is the public hearing, time for you to receive comments from the public on that proposed budget.
Okay, at this time, we'll go into the public comment part. You're limited to three minutes, and we don't have a list, so I would say just stand up and first one go, and then the second one that way. And we'll go up to 30 minutes, so if somebody only speaks for a minute, it'll give us some extra time. So, who would like to be first? Now, this is on the budget. Okay?
My name's Marty Paramore, I'm the clerk of court. I appeared before y'all some time ago and talked about the condition of the courthouse, and I'm here tonight to just simply say thank you. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Tandy Dunn. I'm a native of Beaufort County, a taxpayer, and I'm here today to talk to you about our proposed budget. The proposed budget calls for a 63-cent tax rate. I believe this is the largest tax rate we've ever had. If not, it's pretty close to it. The proposed increase is 14.5% more than what we're currently paying. It is a bloated and unreasonable budget. I attended some of the meetings and was able to watch some of the videos online, not all of them, but some of them, and it appears that we were just handing out money to anybody coming up asking for it. And I was real surprised some folks didn't show up, because I think the way we were handing out money, anybody that wanted money could've got money. No department was asked to cut back on anything or attempt to reduce expenses. In turn, we had to increase the tax rate just to remain revenue-neutral. I would not vote for this if I was a county commissioner. The proposed $4.7 million water department project is uncalled for and unnecessary. You would think that spending that kind of money on an existing system would save you money, but it doesn't, and as a taxpayer, I don't like having to pay for something that I have not nor ever benefit from, because I do not have county water. So, I ask that you review our county budget, go back to departments, ask departments to make some cuts, because we've not asked that, and to reduce the budget so that we're not paying 63 cents as a tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorees. How are you? My name is Stan Deffert. Greetings.
Greetings, Beaufort County citizens.
Tonight, I come to you to discuss what you do each year, the culmination of your policymaking, culmination of your oversight, the budget. This year, you are preparing to embark on the largest tax increase in modern history of Beaufort County, 13.4%. You're doing that at a time when we have had a reduction in property values. Your valuation is down, I believe, three pennies to get to revenue-neutral. If you do the math with the property values being decreased over the last eight years, and then you look, take inflation, be though that it may, that it has been limited 2%, sometimes less, but compound that inflation, you see that people's ability to pay in regards to the property tax valuation is down 30%. Yet, I repeat, you are raising the property taxes, 13.4%. This is unheard of in Beaufort County. You do this on the heels of last year raising property taxes, 5.4% from 52 cent to 55 cent. Why? Why are you doing it? I'll tell you why you're doing it. You're spending out of control. You're spending almost $5 million more this year than you spent last year. Last year, you spent millions more than you did the previous year. At the rate you're going, you're gonna continue and continue until the state will come in and stop you. And I hope that doesn't happen, but it could. Now, there's seven of you up there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna break off Jerry and Ed. I served with Jerry and Ed for a lot of years. Remember that, guys? I served as the county commissioner for 18 years. I've never voted for a tax increase, not once. I voted to cut spending, took a lot of pains and jabs for that, but I did consider everything, and I considered that cutting spending was a wiser measure than increasing spending. I break off Ed and Jerry, because Ed and Jerry are both liberals. They're constituents of liberals. They expect them to vote liberal. For Jerry and Ed, there's a certain honesty there, and I, you know, I can appreciate that. I really can. But the rest of you are five so-called Republicans, except for that guy, Hilda Richardson. He's a real Republican. He's a conservative Republican. He's always been one. He believes in oversight, he believes in policy, and he manages and watches both. You other four Republicans, nominal as you may be, will not stop spending. You've spent money on things that we don't need. You've spent, overspent on things that we do need. And what do we have to show for it? We have an increase of 13.4%. Is that my three minutes up?
Three minutes.
Good. Well, I might have to revisit this if we've got some more time in the 30 minutes. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I really hadn't planned on speaking, but my name is Dot Moat. I've attended a lot of your meetings, actually, I've attended most of your meetings. I tell you when I think you're wrong, and I tell you when I think you're right, and of course, we don't always agree. But I wanted to say to you tonight that I commend all of you for the hard work that you did in preparing this budget. I know you're gonna raise my taxes, I'm a taxpayer, and I don't like that, but I understand why you're doing it. I understand the need in this community, particularly where it comes to water, and I just wanted to tell you how I felt about that. I know that HUD's not gonna vote for it, but I'm not too sure about the two liberals that he's talking about. And I want to say one last thing. This is not a venue for those who are running for office to stand up and politicize. Thank you very much.
Got a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, we're down to quasi-judicial hearing, and this is concerning a variance to the Phil Board ordinance. Jamie, if you'd like to come up. Need a motion to go into the judicial hearing?
To move.
Motion and second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, at this time, Katie's gonna swear you in.
So, I'm here to present an application for a billboard variance. The applicant is Republic Media, which is represented by Philip Goodwin. Not sure if Mr. Goodwin is here this evening, I don't see him. But the applicant secured a lease agreement to place a billboard on property. But the applicant secured a lease agreement to place a billboard on property at 7688 U.S. Highway 17 South in the Chalkawinity Township. The applicant requested a setback variance from the billboard ordinance. Republic Media is requesting the variance because the property owner would like the billboard to be further away from their driveway. The billboard ordinance requires a 250-foot setback from side property lines and Republic Media did get the owner of the adjacent property to sign a waiver that says they don't mind if the billboard is located closer to their property. However, according to North Carolina General Statutes 160A-388, in order to grant a variance, the applicant must prove all of the following. One is that unnecessary hardship would result from the strict application of the ordinance. Two, the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property. Three, the hardship is not a self-created hardship. And four, the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the ordinance. In this case, the applicant does not meet any of those criteria. The property owner has a preference that the billboard is further away from their driveway, but there is room on the property to comply with the 250-foot setback requirement and still leave 100-foot clearance of the driveway. So the request is based on a personal preference and can't be considered a hardship. This did go before the planning board and their recommendation is for the Board of Commissioners to deny the billboard variance application. You have some attachments there in your packet to review, the first one being the property map. That should be on page 36 of your packet. And I marked there where the 250 feet from the prop, from the side property line is and showing that there's still another 100 feet clearance before you get to that driveway. And then the lease agreement provided by Republic Media is on page 37 to 38 of your packet. And the letter from the adjacent property owner is on page 39. And the notice that was ran in the Washington Daily News for the quasi judicial hearing is on page 40. And then on page 41 to 43 is just a certification that I did mail notice of this quasi judicial hearing to adjacent property owners. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anyone have any questions? Jamie?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What was the reason the planning board denied the request?
Because the applicant did not meet the, the four things that I read off from the North Carolina General Statutes. Basically, if you have an ordinance, then they have to meet those four things in order for you to grant a variance from that ordinance. And I'll read those again for you, but this is North Carolina General Statutes 160A-388. And it says to grant a variance from an adopted ordinance, they must prove all of the following. One, unnecessary hardship would result from the strict application of the ordinance. Two, the hardship results from conditions that are peculiar to the property. Three, the hardship is not a self-created hardship. Four, the requested variance is consistent with the spirit, purpose, and intent of the ordinance. And the planning board felt that they did not meet any of those requirements.
Any other?
Sorry.
Any other question? Just step over just for a second. We, we didn't have anybody sign up. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address? Okay, we, we either need to deny or approve. So I'll entertain a motion to do either one. But we do need to take action.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
In order to be consistent, I was at that particular planning board meeting, so I saw what was presented, the maps and the whole discussion. The applicant has to meet all of those four requirements. That's why we're quasi judicial. The appeal from here is to Superior Court. So if they don't meet all of the requirements, we can't approve the permit. So I move that we not approve the variance that's requested.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to deny discussion. If not, we'll entertain a vote. All those in favor of denying, raise your right hand. Okay? Thank you very much. Now, we need a motion to come out of the hearing. Got a motion to come out of the hearing. Second.
Second.
Now, second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carried. All right, now we're down to the public comments. And before we have the public comments, there's been questions asked of me and some of the other commissioners as it relates to things that go on during the public comments. I'm not going to read you what was approved by the board in previous years, but I will highlight some of the comments that I've been getting questions on. The comment period will be limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. We ask that you indicate your name and the topic. You're limited to three minutes. And then speakers will address all comments to the board as a whole and not to one commissioner. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers shall, shall not discuss any of the following, concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office. And I think that answers most of the questions that, well, here's the last one. No, I'm sorry, that's it. Okay? At this time, we'll start and the only one I had, or you got? Pardon?
The only one I had was Marty, Mr. Paramore.
Okay, Marty?
Peter spoke.
Would you like to?
Well, let me say this way, because I don't think I made it clear.
Come on up, come on up, so, so Randy, so Randy won't have to strain his mind.
So I was saying, thank you. If any of y'all had been in here a couple of months ago, you would have seen the entire ceiling in this room was completely gone. The benches were up to the side. They have come in and replaced all the ceiling tiles. The vents, we've been led by Christina Smith. She does a great job. We meet every week trying to juggle court schedules and get all these things done. It's truly amazing. But the, the purpose for me to be here tonight was just to say thank you. And that's what I wanted to do. There's still more work that needs to be done. There always will be, but this is a great start. So once again, I just wanted to be clear. I'm here to say thank you. We've come a long ways here in the courthouse.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move right into our items for consent. Is there any of these items that you want to move to the regular agenda to further discuss?
Katie, did you have one more for comment?
I'm sorry?
Did you have one more for comment? Really? We got called?
We're ready to talk.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Items for consent. Can I get a motion to approve? Okay, got a motion to approve the items for consent? Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. We're down to item number J, items for discussion. The first one is notify designated parties when prisoners are admitted to the hospital update. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, the purpose of this being on the agenda is we have an ongoing thing with getting advice about an ordinance directing the sheriff to notify the designated parties when a prisoner is admitted to the hospital. So I would like to ask the manager and the county attorney to report on what the information that they have received from the various places that we were asking for information
From my previous discussion in the last meeting, I haven't received any additional information from the Association of County Commissioners.
No.
So there's nothing to report on this?
Anything from the Department of Justice?
Well, then we have enough information. If we have all of the information that we're going to get, we have enough information to produce the, to produce the ordinance. So there will be some consideration given to that to come up at the next meeting.
Any other comment on that? All right. We're down to item number two, the water meter upgrade. Commissioner Richardson.
Oh, the water meter upgrade. I would like to, I didn't realize that was going to be on the agenda for approval. It's on the agenda later for approval and I'd like to save my comments until it becomes an item.
Okay. Item number three, revaluation, high valuations. Commissioner Richardson.
Well, revaluation, one of the things that has come out of revaluation, while most people, we're having, very few people show up to make complaints based on the revaluation. And the reason is because the property values have gone down so much. Everyone seems to be happy their property's going to be taxed apparently less than it was the last time. There are a few that have gone up. But what the, the, the hidden secret in all of that is with, with revenue neutral, in theory, you should be paying the same amount of taxes, again, when you get that three cents added to it that you were paying before. So that's the dirty little secret that's hidden in that. But one of the things that has come to light is that there are some categories of properties that are valued higher than the recent sales. Recent sales being sales that have taken place within the last two years. Some of those categories of property are lots in particular that are in subdivisions and some waterfront properties. In particular, lots in some of the waterfront subdivisions that didn't sell, the lots for tax values are valued much higher than the, than the recent sales. Charlotte, North Carolina had this problem seven or eight years ago when they had categories and areas that had been valued too high. And there was lawsuits and Charlotte, Mecklenburg County had to go back and make adjustments and corrections to this. What I'm proposing to do, this is a discussion item right now, but what I'm proposing is that the commissioners engage a mass valuation firm, and that's what we use to do these evaluations, firm to examine these particular categories and to make whatever adjustments that are appropriate, to recommend these adjustments to the commissioners so we can take a look at them. It's ridiculous when a lot can only sells for $20,000, can only be sold for $20,000 in the last two years, but it has a 40 or $50,000 valuation. That is, that is off the scope. So what I'm asking commissioners to do is to consider hiring another revaluation firm. Not there's anything wrong with this firm. They've worked for us for years, but we need a third-party assessment as to what the real value for tax purposes of some of these categories of property should be.
Are, are you making a motion?
Well, as for discussion, I mean, I can make that as a motion.
That's right.
I don't mind making it as a motion.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't know if I should address this to you and to the county manager. Doesn't the revaluation board have the authority when somebody comes in with data to make a determination if the price is too low or too high?
They do. The Board of Equalization and Review, which is what I have been currently, what you're currently sitting is that, I don't think you've been dismissed yet. You do have the, the way it works, the process, of course, is you go through the revaluation process in a revale year. You have informal appeals with the revaluation staff and then it comes to you as the Board of Equalization and Review. If people are not satisfied with that, then they can go to the Property Tax Commission. If they're not satisfied with the Property Tax Commission, they can go forward up through the court system. But that's generally the practice. The, the extra piece in there is the informal appeals with the, with the revaluation firm in a revale year. And outside of a revaluation year, they would come to you, the Board of Commissioners, who sits as the Board of Equalization and Review, to, to hear that information and then make adjustments based on that if you feel it's appropriate.
They could come to this board then?
They, they would come to you as, sitting as the Board of Equalization and Review.
So that's a separate board that has the authority? I'm hearing you saying that's a separate board that has the authority to lower somebody? If they come in, they can justify based upon Commissioner Richardson saying, "Sales prices, evaluate, evaluation of property of surrounding area," that that board has, that independent board has the authority to lower those rates?
They have the ability to look at those and make adjustments based on the information that are provided and if they believe that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, what I'm, what I'm presenting, there are large areas and large categories of properties in Beaufort County that have systematic errors in valuations. And what that means is, we had, the last Board of Equalization and Review, we had, I don't know, four or five people come in from Cypress Landy. Lots there, and don't hold me to these numbers, but were selling for 20 to $25,000. The tax value on those lots was like 45 to 60,000. Those people that took the trouble to come and complain have pointed out that there is a systematic error in the valuation of lots in Cypress Landy. There are other waterfront subdivisions all over the county that the lots are valued much higher than, for tax purposes, than what you can sell the lots for based upon recent sales, which is what the law requires. What I'm arguing is to do justice to all of the taxpayers of Beaufort County and to those property owners, that this board engage, because we have the money, the Board of Equalization and Review does not have a budget, that this board hires someone to look at these various categories so that adjustments can be made. The, the reason that this is important is we have just completed an eight-year revaluation. If we were four years into the revale, then, then people would need to come and make their own presentation to the Board of Adjustment and see if they could get their values changed. But if we have systematic errors, errors on a new revale, then it's the responsibility of this board to address that. And I'm saying that we should address that in the interest of the taxpayers. One of the things that could happen from this that is good for the county, it's good for the taxpayers to have a fair valuation of their property, but if these valuations drop, there may be more lot sales, there may be more development on these lots by not holding them to artificially high levels.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner.
I have to agree with Commissioner Richardson on the property values of some of these lots. But what I'd like to see staff do before we go out and hire anybody is sit down with the people that did our equalization and find out what their thinking's on these lots are. Why were they priced so much higher than what the true value of them? And then we can, if we can't get any satisfaction from them, then we can hire another firm and take a look at it.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, also the, our tax, Mr. Parker, I think he's going to go out and review some of the people that come in to talk to us. Boy, who's going to go out and look at those lots?
I'm, I'm assuming we're going to have at least one more meeting?
That, that's my understanding from Mr. Parker. I think he said they had about 14 people were all that were left. And he anticipated having another one.
Just to make sure nothing else pops up at, at the next one, we can address all of it at one time.
I don't, I don't have a problem, but you're really doing a scan for the whole county when you do this. But if we can identify more areas that need to be looked at, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, just for the public record, there was one out of, I think it was 10, that did sell for 45. The rest of them were in that 20 to 25 range. Sorry. We'll move into items for discussion. The first one is the Operating Memorandum of Understanding for Consolidation of County Water Districts. Brian? I'm sorry. Let both start with a D. One is discussion. This is decision. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On page 124 of your agenda package, this is the item relating to the MOU for consolidation of the county water districts. As you recall, at a regular meeting on April the 9th of this board, you approved consolidating the county water districts into a single operating entity. The operations of that entity would be controlled by a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, between the county and the separate water districts. You have a copy of the proposed MOU and a resolution that consolidates those districts based on that. Mr. Bob Jessup, who is an attorney with Sanford-Holz Houser Law Firm, is here tonight. He helped us on that MOU and in the legal piece and looking at, because I know there's been some discussion previously with the board about whether you could do those things or whether you couldn't. Mr. Jessup looked at those and put this together.
Mr. Jessup looked at those and put this together, and he's here to answer any questions you may have tonight about the MOU, about the legal standing of being able to do this. We appreciate his firm, he and his firm, being here and, and helping us with that. Be glad to answer any questions you have. I would, I would remind you that the water districts are an enterprise fund, they're not a tax fund, so all the, the revenue generated by these funds go to pay for that. There are no tax dollars that are associated with the enterprise funds.
Bob, would you like, I'm sorry, you want, you want to step up here? You may not have any questions, but.
But that's fine, I'm happy to be here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Bob Jessup from the firm Sanford-Holzhausen, and I'm delighted that we had a chance to work for you on this.
Any, any questions of Bob as it relates to the, the agreement between Beaufort County and the water districts?
I have a curiosity question.
Yes.
It's not going to change my vote, but the, is there enabling legislation that allows counties to combine the operations of these various enterprise entities?
We, there's authority for what we're doing here, which is having the county enter into an agreement with the districts, for the county to exercise directly the management of those districts' operations.
As combined, combining?
As, as one combined entity. We are not combining the districts. The districts will still exist, the separate entities will still retain their assets, they just could be managed in a more centralized fashion by the county.
But there's no specific legislation that says you can do this?
Well, there's legislation that says you can have contracts between the entity that says the county can enter into an agreement with another unit of local government to carry out any function that that unit of local government can carry out, the, under that interlocal agreement statute. It does not specify in there every type of, of undertaking that the local government might do, but this is where it says that.
Mr. Chairman. But there's nothing in state law that says we can't do this?
Well, right, but it's also true that when you're a local government, you need to find something that says you can, and this is the statute that says you can enter into contracts for the county to carry out anything that the district could do, and that's with this contract.
Any other? All right. I, I think it would be good, just so that we get it into the public record, if either Brian or Nita would address some of the comments from the Local Government Commission as it relates to some of the previous audits that we've received, as it relates to the water districts and questions that has come up.
Well, first of all, I did call the Local Government Commission, both areas, both the, the finance and the debt section of the LGC, and spoke with both, both directors, and neither one of them had a problem with what we're doing here, as far as the interlocal agreement for the operations. As far as your comment about previous things contained in the audit, what really brought all this about is, we do have a couple of districts that are struggling financially, and when you look at our water system as a whole, it's a very healthy system financially, and so that's one of the main reasons that we do want to combine the systems financially anyway as a whole.
The districts will say, will stay separate districts until the debt is paid off for the district, so that is until there's another, another 25 years or so. But it's an operational agreement, as Mr. Jessup explained, that allows us to manage that in a consolidated format.
Anyone else have a comment or a question? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Operating Memorandum of Understanding.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I might suggest that a motion to approve the resolution that's in your packet would be the better way to do that.
Okay. Stand corrected, need a motion to approve the resolution that's in our.
We'll approve the resolution.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay.
Thanks again very much, we really appreciate the chance to work for you on this.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, item number two is the transfer of the real property to Higher Heights. Brian, that's you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In March of, and just kind of go through this piece with you, so that everything's clear on the record. In March of 12, the county entered into a lease agreement with Higher Heights Human Services Incorporated, which is a nonprofit corporation for the use of county-owned real property located at 1723 Highland Drive in Washington. The purpose of that three-year lease agreement was to allow Higher Heights to renovate and repair the structures on the property, so that the largest of the two could meet licensing requirements for a residential maternity home licensed by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. The lease was extended for an additional three-year period on April of 15. At a regular meeting on May 7th of this year, the Director of Higher Heights asked the board to consider deeding the real property contained in the lease agreement to Higher Heights, under the provisions of NCGS 168-279, and allowing the consideration for that deed to be the continued public purpose use of the property. The board asked staff at that meeting to draft the appropriate documents for your consideration. So in drafting those documents, Nita threw a couple of statutes with you. As you'll see in that second paragraph, NCGS 168-279 reads, "Whenever a city or county is authorized to appropriate funds to any public or private entity that carries out a public purpose, the city or county may, in lieu of or in addition to the appropriation of funds, convey by private sale to such entity any real or personal property of which it owns, provided no property acquired by the exercise of eminent domain may be conveyed under this section, and provided that no such conveyance may be made to a for-profit corporation." For, for your information, the property that we're discussing was not acquired by eminent domain, and the county currently appropriates funding to Higher Heights to support its public purpose. In the, in the, the request that their consideration be the public use, it is not constitutionally required that a local government receive monetary consideration when it conveys property. Brumley v. Baxter in 1945 provided that if a party receives the property and agrees to put it to public use, that promise constitutes sufficient consideration for the conveyance. Back to 168-279, it further reads that if a city or county shall convey such a conveyance, covenants or conditions which assure that the property be put to a public use by the recipient entity. So you can require certain things to ensure that that's put to a public use. So we've drafted a resolution for you that requires the property to be used as a residential maternity home with licensing by the North Carolina Department of Human Services within the three years of the transfer. If that requirement is not met, the property will revert back to the county. Additionally, as part of the statute to assure that the property will be put to a public use by a public entity, the resolution requires that an annual report be given to the Board of Commissioners by, by Higher Heights, and to detail its operations, and if so desired by this board, a member of the Board of Commissioners may serve as an ex officio member on the Higher Heights Board of Directors. Transfer of the property is controlled by procedures in 168-267, so if the board wishes to proceed with the transfer, the attached resolution must be approved, and a notice summarizing the contents of the resolution or order shall be published once after its adoption, and no sale should be consummated until 10 days after its publication. So in your packet, you have the attached resolution that deeds the above referenced property under those conditions that we discussed to Higher Heights for its use as a residential maternity home with licensing by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services within three years of the transfer. Be glad to answer any questions you have regarding that procedure or, or the resolution that was drafted for your consideration.
Anyone have any questions of Brian?
I have a question.
Yes.
Just for interpretation, item number four at the top of page 137 says, "If so desired by the Board of Commissioners, a Commissioner may serve as an ex officio member of the Higher Heights Board of Directors." Does, is, is the intent of that language that we're reserving the right, should we desire in the future to do that, or is it necessary that we just say now whether we're going to do that or not?
I, I think the, the language, I put that language in there so that because you're required to ensure that that property continues to be used as a public purpose, if this board so chose that a report every year was fine, and you didn't want to have somebody on the board, then that was okay. But if you so desired that you wanted to have someone sit on that board so that you could see the internal operations of that organization as a, on the board level, then this would allow you to do that if you so chose to do that. That, that's not something uncommon in situations like this.
Right, and I know it off of the attorney shook his head one way or the other, but, but that if we're going to do that, we need to make that decision now. I think we should have an ex officio member on the board, or we should state that we deserve the right at some time in the future, should we so desire, that we can have an ex officio member at any time we would like, and I'm not, you know, whichever way the board wants to move on that.
Any, any other comment? David, do you have any?
The way it's worded, it says, "if so desired by the Board of Commissioners," and you can put some ex officio. So he's correct, it could be either, either way, but what the intent, as stated, is if so desired, so you don't have to do it right now.
Oh, okay, we can do it at any time in the future that we desire.
Yes.
You know, the problem on these boards is sometime, while we may have a lot of confidence in the board today, boards change, and at some time in the future, things may start looking funny over there, and we'll say what's going on, and we will have the right, the way the wording will be in the final contract, so that we can send someone whatever we desire. Is that, does that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
May I?
Got a motion?
I'm sorry.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we should recognize the lady.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Would you introduce yourself?
I'm Loretta Ebbsell, I'm the Executive Director of Higher Heights Human Services. I appeared in front of you last month making this request.
Right, okay.
And I just wanted to, I read over the, the information that your lawyer has provided to me, and we did, it did say for public purpose. I wanted to make sure that we're not limited to the maternity home, and I submitted you documentations on what three areas we work in. We work in the maternity home, obviously, providing housing, but we also work in the prevention area and the transitional areas. So I just wanted to make that clear, that it may not be, it may be a maternity home, but it may not just be a maternity home. So I just wanted to make that clear, so that is mentioned in the final documentation for review.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that.
Pardon?
No problem. Long as it's for public purposes.
Now, I understand for clarification, with deeding the property, that the $20,000 a year that we have been donating, we're not doing that anymore, because they have more than $20,000 in value that they can use.
Well, we, we had that discussion during the budget workshop, but we, we couldn't take a vote on it then, so the night during our budget discussion, we'll be able to address that.
Okay.
And I thank you guys for your generosity, but I just want you to, when you have your budget discussions, I just kind of want you to keep in mind that we're, and organizations has been underfunded, so even with acquiring the properties, which we really appreciate, we don't, you know, we don't intend to go in debt. So when you're thinking about the budget, just think about, just a prime example, a grant that we usually get, we've gotten it for the last three years, was reallocated to a newer organization in the county. So we are having budget shortfall, so if you just can keep that in mind as you do your budget planning, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If, if there's no other discussion, then we'll take a vote. All of those in favor of approving this resolution, authorizing the transfer of the county-owned real property located at 1723 Highland Drive, Washington, North Carolina, to Higher Heights Human Services Incorporated? Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Look, six to one. Looking the wrong way, Katie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to item number three, the position reclassification. Kelly Smith?
Good evening, Commissioners. I come to you tonight on behalf of the Beaufort County Department of Social Services. We are requesting a position reclassification from, we have a vacant position right now, it's vacated on March the 31st of this year, and that position is currently an income maintenance caseworker three. We are requesting that that position be downgraded to an income maintenance caseworker two, just to meet the changing needs of our department. We have been in consultation with the Beaufort County Human Resources Manager, as well as the Office of State Human Resources, and this classification has been approved by the, it will be a little bit of savings to the county, about $3,600, the downgrade. And like I said, due to the changing needs in that department, is why we're requesting this. This position currently handles long-term care Medicaid and special assistance Medicaid, but we really need someone to handle family and children's Medicaid and adult Medicaid, you know, not the special assistance and the long-term care. So that is why we are requesting this downgrade. Question?
Questions of Kelly? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Entertain a motion?
Some move.
Here are a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I didn't see you, Jerry. All right. Now, we're down to item number four, elevation projects. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioners. As you know, Ms. Lisa has been working on behalf of the county and a number of our residents over the years on several mitigation properties. Tonight, we are submitting for your consideration three properties for elevation annual acquisition. These properties are located between Washington Park and Mose Shores along the waterfront. They're actually part of a, a larger project that was implemented last November. They were originally a group of six structures. Three of those structures already have monies allocated toward it, these are the remaining three. These three just got held up in the application process, so they're starting a little later. The monies for these projects are all federal funding, there's no match from the county, no county tax or revenue that's required for them. With that, we are asking for a motion to adopt a project ordinance to allow or allocate money for the, for these three structures to be mitigated.
Is anyone have a question of Chris? Could I have a motion to?
Motion to approve.
Motion, but, and a second. Any, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, item number five is the automatic metering infrastructure update. Christina?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you this evening is a follow-up from the May meeting. During that meeting, Mr. Andy Honeycutt with MeterSys gave a presentation regarding the automatic metering project that has been discussed by the Beaufort County Water Department for many months. During that meeting, after the presentation, the board gave staff direction to work with Ferguson Enterprises to compile a contract in order to move forward with the project. That contract is presented to you in your budget book. Entertain any questions? And also with us this evening is Mr. Honeycutt, who just stepped out, but also Brian Jones with Ferguson Enterprises, if there are any specific questions.
This, this time, is there any questions of Christina or Andy, or I missed the other name of the other ones?
Brian Jones.
Is that the new meetings you're talking about in Stone?
I'm sorry.
That's the new meetings you're talking about in Stone?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
The only question I have, during the presentation, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
During the presentation, you only stated that if we do those meetings, we only lose two jobs. What would it be doing, if you don't need meter readers?
They would be, it would transition from meter readers to a metering technician person. They would be, it would transition from meter readers to a metering technician person. The person, they would still be installing the meters, and there will still continue to be issues.
Is that the same qualification to be a meter reader to do a install?
No, sir. There would be additional training that would be required for current employees. Because it's an electronic meter, so there are different, just different skills and different education that would be required.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
What is the, what is the performance guarantee of the percentage of meters in the county that this system should read without the system?
That is actually, there is a requirement that's in the contract, and I will have to flip through to find that.
Did we not get a memo from Andy on, on one of the water systems that had it implemented? Or he might go in the wrong way, Hood.
No, I think that's the right direction, but.
Are you telling?
Andy, you want, you want, you want to step up here?
Yes, sir.
Seems like the number was 97 or 98%.
The system under contract's warranted at 98.5% of all reads that come in. And that's, that's 98.5% of 24 hourly interval reads across the system.
What happens if you're at 95%?
If you're 95%, you've got either a warranty issue. In some cases, the company will choose to come back and support and troubleshoot that high failure rate. We have not seen those types of failure rates in other deployments. That would be very uncommon. So in 98.5%, most of the solutions we're seeing, well-managed, well-maintained, is above 99%. So that would be a rare occurrence.
Questions of Andy or Christina?
I have one question.
Yes, Commissioner.
Is there going to be a need for increasing staff in this new system?
Other questions? Here again, I think for the public record, two of the things that I had written down that we discussed before was the fact that it improves customer service for our 13,000 customers. And then the other biggie is on the conservation. We use less water because we find the leaks very early and can report that and hopefully it could get fixed. We go back to, was it January, when one of the churches used like 100,000 gallons of water before they realized that they had a problem?
Yes, sir. We actually spoke with, I spoke with a representative from Public Water Supply this past week. He was actually in our office or last week, and he was very much supportive of this type of program. From his words, he has dealt with the other systems, and especially when emergency situations or extreme cold snaps, that systems that have these type of systems in place are able to isolate and find the leaks much faster, therefore they're in a much more, a much stronger position in order to keep water in the air to the customers.
Any more questions? Yes, Commissioner Evans.
I think we talked about it one time, the current meters are starting to reach their time where they're just not accurate, number one, and the failure rate will begin to decrease and it didn't meet.
Yes, sir. End of life.
Service lives.
If there's no other.
Let me just make one comment. There's lots of false economy in this, and if you vote on this, I've got a statement I'm going to read. But part of that false economy is, so a church used 200,000 gallons of water in one month, all right? How much above do we pay, do they pay for water? $2 a thousand?
Yes, sir.
So you're only talking about $400. You're trying to justify a $4 million expenditure on a $400 loss for somebody, and that doesn't fly. The other thing that happens in meters, the majority of the meters in Beaufort County do not, we do not pay a premium, that is, we do not go above the minimum usage. So we don't care whether those meters are working right or not, as long as they're not mis-measuring to the point that we are losing money, that they're using a lot more, a lot more water. So you're talking maybe 3, 4, 5% efficiency. This is a false economy that you guys are talking about.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Now we'll have more discussion if anybody would like to add anything to it.
I have something to say, and I'll pass this around to get it to the clerk while I read my statement. I cannot vote for any part of this project for the following reasons. Beaufort County operates our water system as an enterprise. Simply said, this is a business in which the customers pay all of the bills, just like they would pay for all of the bills to produce the automobile they drive. The water system is not subsidized by county government. No taxpayer money is put into it. In order for any company, our water system, to spend money for large projects, they have to see a way of getting that money back. Some call it a return on investment. County staff has informed each commissioner that there is no way of getting this money back, except for their purported savings of $200,000 per year. That will take 24 years just to get even on cash. Investments of this kind should be paid back in not more than 10 years, and preferably five or six years. The amount of purported savings, the $200,000, is so small, when compared to the expense of $4.7 million, has to be insignificant and not measurable. If the investment, and I'm seeing a lot of typos in this thing, I thought I got them. The investment cannot be recovered, if the investment cannot be recovered by saving money, then it becomes an expense to the water users. So the users of water will pay the $4.7 million and get no economic benefit. You will pay this with increased water bills. This automation project has been poorly planned. We can save money by automating our water system, but this is not the way to do it. There are security and private issues involved that have not been adequately addressed. These meters transmit data to a radio network. We should ensure that the network is secure from unauthorized use or access. In other words, it's the same thing as the issue on smart meters. When the power company put a smart meter at your house, then it's possible to put a few pieces of hardware on that, and you can know everything that's going on about everything in the house. It's a security issue, and this system is no different than that. Further complicating this situation, there is only a single bidder, and the bidder is the same firm that was asked to give a consultative opinion. Good practice would require a third-party outsider who does not stand to benefit from the money spent to examine this project. This is another example of bad judgment, bad management, and commissioners who have no business skills.
Mr. Chairman, I know Andy has a sheet in his hand, and I think he's able to respond to some of those comments if he'd like to, regarding the process, regarding the issue with piggybacking, which it's my understanding is a significant savings for us, based on a project that was currently bid. So I let Mr. Honeycutt speak.
Sure, thanks for that. First and foremost, we'll start with the compelling elements. MeterSys is an independent company to all the way to the country. We've never taken a dime from any company. We work on behalf of the public entity. I served 25 years in the public entity interest. I've got an auxiliary, 25 years of high ethical and moral standards. And our company shares the same thing. We don't work with the manufacturers. We work for the county. And so our job is to understand the requirements of the county from a water use and a water metering perspective, and then shape those requirements into the best fit solution. Sensus happens to be, through Ferguson Distribution, the best fit for the county. And I can, I can tell you why, in fact. So we go on record as a company that's never advocated in a sole-source environment in the, in the eight procurement activities we've had in the last two years. Now, what time have we gone through a waiver or a recommendation of bid? In this particular case, because of your geographic size, and because of some of the requirements that you want, which includes remote disconnect, and distribution monitoring, and some of the other functions, there's only one company that can meet those standards. And those are the standards of Ferguson's manufacturing at Sensus. They have a two-watt output. The infrastructure is half that of all of the other manufacturers, because you're so bidding. And that means we save on exc cost down the road, we save on capital cost on the investment. That's first. The second, the waiver of bidding, we evaluated your costs in quantity compared to bids that just hit the street, that we're procuring and awarding through competitive bid. And the company, Sensus, taking that unit price in 2018 compared to the 2016 prices that you're getting, is $400,000 less than what you would do if you paid it on the market today. And so by that regard, if you were to put it on the street and find Sensus to be the best-suited vendor for that, for your requirements, you're going to pay $400,000 more in capital. That's just the street price in today's, today's numbers. The other piece is the $200,000 in savings. That's above and beyond what we looked at when harden self-cost savings, self-cost, the hardened self-cost savings, and then debt service, that's above and beyond. Exc cost, retention of capital, and debt service, retention of capital. And then that's $200,000 of hardened self-value above and beyond your cost. And so the assumption that that's a payback is not correct. The other piece is that your infrastructure is reaching end-of-service life. That alone for labor and installation, installation and equipment, is worth about $1.8 million. And so regardless of whether you look at it from a business perspective, on the four-and-a-half million, the approximately 1.8, 1.9 million would have to be done by the county anyway to maintain the status quo. And so at 42% of the capital cost being something you'd have to do anyway, we looked at the business case for just AMI, and then that difference on debt is about 20,000 a year. And so the implications to the county from a rate perspective is negligible. It's $20,000 less than what you would generate through direct efficiencies and direct savings. The only other issue that came up was cloud services. So privacy and security. These companies have gotten very smart in technology about establishing encrypted communication from the meter and the endpoint to the head-end system and then into your CIS system. And that head-end system is where all the data originates, and that's cloud-protected. And so when we, when we put data in to the system, nothing originates from the, from the meter or the endpoint that has customer data attached to it. There is no customer data until it gets to the head-end system, and it communicates with your, your utility billing system. That's where, and you're already in that environment. Your CIS, your customer information system, is currently activated in a software environment, in a cloud system, much like the head-end system is. And you put it in the cloud for a reason, because it's got greater protections, it's got replication, it's got disaster recovery, it's got all the things that you would want to be highly secure and highly protected to customer data.
Any, any other questions or comments?
Chairman Waters, I'd like to also add a couple of things. Because I had not seen that before, I'll only pick up on a few things. But one, one comment that I definitely would like to give a little more information on is to state that this project is a poorly planned project, I think is definitely inaccurate statement. This project is something that a lot, a lot of time and energy has gone into, and RFP was actually issued back in November of 2016. There was, the Water Committee has been involved in this process the entire time. There was a committee that reviewed the RFPs, selected MeterSys to be the contractor. They then went through their different studies of our system and gave a report to the Water Committee starting in October of 2017, then continued doing that. The three commissioners that serve on the Water Committee, then along with Beaufort County Water Department staff and management staff, visited the manufacturing facilities in the Raleigh and Lawrenceville area in order to make sure that we feel comfortable with the system. And then again, the Water Committee, another presentation was given in March of 2018, which they then voted unanimously to present to the full Board of Commissioners. So again, a lot of thought, a lot of energy, a lot of analysis has gone into this system in order to, to make the recommendation that I made, which I believe wholeheartedly is in the best interest of the Beaufort County Water Department, as well as all of the customers that work there.
Thank you very much.
I got one more. Christine, as the gentleman just stated, that your system is on its last leg, we would call it. So we're going to do something one way or the other. We need to do this system or we're going to get a system somewhere shortly down the road, is that correct?
Well, meters, our, our existing meters are manually read meters, so meters are failing each and every day. We have service calls that come in, and so we have technicians that go out and they replace meters.
What causes them to fail every day?
Just the age of the meters.
That's what I was saying.
Yes, yes, sir.
You're going to buy them sooner or later, the cost is going to go.
Yes, sir. And we're continuing to grow. We're very, that's a good thing that we're continuing to have growth. So, you know, meter readers that we currently have, we will need to add additional meter readers in the future in order to cover, to continue reading the meters each and every month.
Thank you.
One of, one of the comments of one of the previous water meter readers, when we had a contract with Tideland EMC, made the comment to me, says, "Don't do it piecemeal." Believe me, the whole system needs to be read down at the same time. And he has no skin in the game at this point in time.
Other, other water systems have also made that same recommendation.
Call to question. All right. All those in favor of pursuing the contract and approving it, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you very much. We're down to almost seven o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break, At this time, we'll reconvene. We're down to item number six under Items for Discussion, the fiscal year 1718 Solid Waste Budget Amendment. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are in need of a budget amendment for the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund to cover costs for collecting and transferring solid waste for the remainder of the year. Our contracts are primarily based on tonnage, so the more garbage people throw away, of course, that increases our cost. Fortunately, there are excess revenues for the solid waste fee, and also some of the tax distributions coming from the state that are more than sufficient to cover this. So you'll find on page 368, there is an attached budget amendment in the amount of $93,000 that needs to be adopted in order to cover those costs throughout through June 30th, 2018.
Are we entertaining a motion to?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Okay. We're down to item number seven, Revision City County Purchasing Policy. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are new federal procurement requirements that will go into effect July 1st that need to be incorporated in our current purchasing policy in order for us to remain compliant. Basically, we're adding two new sections to our existing policies. They begin on page 381. The first section we're adding is Section 15. The title is Procurement Procedures with Federal Funds. The second section is Conflict of Interest When You're Using Federal Funds. That can be found on page 391. In addition to that, while I was reviewing our current policy in order to add these, these new sections, I also noticed that there are a couple of areas in our policy where there are incorrect thresholds listed for the state formal and informal bidding amounts, and we're also correcting those at this time.
Any questions of Anita? I'll entertain at this time a motion to update our county purchasing policy to reflect the changes that have been changed by federal and state?
Federal and corrections to the state thresholds that we had in our policy.
Motion to approve.
And one other thing I'd like to mention, I would like to give this policy that we have to the Finance Committee, so they can review it over their next couple of meetings. And if they want to make any additional updates, we can bring that back to this board at a later time if they have any recommendations.
Okay. We have a. We have a motion by Commissioner Langley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Busio. Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Item number eight is Mideast Commission Planning Services Contract for the Fiscal Year 18 and 19. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We are currently under contract with the Mideast to provide our planning services. This is a new contract that covers the upcoming fiscal year 1819. It is a not-to-exceed contract figure of $60,000, and it is billed on a time, as they use the time they bill us, but it is a not-to-exceed $60,000 for the year. So we'd recommend your approval.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Booth, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brand. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There are some edits that I think need to be done to Exhibit A. Item number three needs to say with the county attorney rather than the town attorney.
What page is that?
407.
407.
Yeah. And then go down to item number eight, Administration of Subdivision Mobile Home. I think since we've got part of this stuff in here, we need to have it all in here, you should add camper, comma, subdivision, comma, addressing ordinance.
Camping, addressing, you talk about nine.
Camper, subdivision, addressing. And then you go on with junkyard billboard and land use regulations. I realize land use regulations is all-encompassing, but we have a few county employees who are attorneys. We have one that we pay for attorney, but we have several that practice law, and they're going to start picking this thing apart. And so I think if we do that, we're just making it more clear. And then I have a couple more changes. Go to item 12, Processing of Major and Insert Minor Subdivisions From Inception to Completion. Now, minor subdivision is nine lots or less. That's just to define that, so that they've got their hands on it. And then we should add an item number 13, which says Review and Supervise of Special Subdivisions. Special subdivisions are less than three lots, and three lots or less, and we need the consultant to be giving us oversight on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson, on number 12, what about if we just say subdivisions? Would that cover major, minor?
Well, in the ordinance, there are three that are specifically defined and set out, and that's why I've got all three of them when we say it this way. I wanted to be sure there were all three in there. That goes to item 13, where we need some supervision on one-to-three-lot subdivisions because people are going out and planning a 20-lot subdivision, and then they're saying it's only three lots, so they bring those three lots in, and then next thing you know, you've got road problems and a whole bunch of other things.
I agree with you on both 12 and 13. I was just wondering if we could just say subdivisions.
Well, if you just say subdivisions, you should say all subdivisions.
I'm just.
Yeah, because they're defined independently. The problem is the people that work for the county that practice law without a license.
I don't know what to say.
We have that.
I'm like down here.
Oh, yes, we have that.
I'm like, that's fine.
I know what you're thinking, Francisco. I'm reading your mind.
You said other attorneys, right.
Yeah.
You're saying other attorneys.
Brian, explain number six.
Preparation for and intense at the Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, County Commissioners Meetings, if there's an agenda item that...
That's what I want you to clarify. You don't have to come to every county commissioner meeting.
No, and they wouldn't. I mean, this is essentially their general scope of work that they do. This is the college's general scope of work and...
Where's the Board of Adjustment? I mean, where did the Board of Adjustment?
In case they'd like the Board of Adjustment if they have a variance.
You and David got all the changes that were discussed? Okay?
Sure.
Can we get a motion to approve with the changes that were just discussed?
So moved.
All right, we got a motion by Commissioner Busio. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brand. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the contract with the Mideast Commission, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, the next one is Young Williams Child Support Contract Amendment. That's you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board is aware, Young Williams currently provides child support enforcement services to Beaufort County, and you have a professional services agreement with him that runs through fiscal year 1920. They operate out of the DSS building in Beaufort County, and they are currently engaged in negotiations with Hyde County to do their child support function. Due to the small caseload that Hyde County has, Young Williams is proposing that they handle that child support caseload through the office that's located in Beaufort County and use the same resources. In return for that, they're going to discount their fees to Beaufort County by $30,000 per fiscal year for the remaining term of the contract, which is this upcoming year and next fiscal year. So we would recommend your approval on that. Answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on? All right. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Langley, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Evans. Any question? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Hey, hey, hey. I'm going to oppose.
Well, Jerry had you blocked.
No, but he didn't have you blocked.
Okay, all those opposed? Did I miss any? Okay. All voted for. All right. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Commissioner Booth. Down to item number 10, the purchase of the driveway property serving the Horn property. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, there's a driveway property that's adjacent to the south side of the Horn building, and that's owned by Mr. Chris Flo and his wife Nancy. That property is identified as RE Number 12144, and it's shown in your attached documentation. The acquisition of that piece of property allows us to use the existing parking lot without having to change the flow of traffic. Mr. Flo has offered to sell that property to the county. The current tax value on that property is $61,056,105. We are in a reval year, so that is what is determined as market, and he's willing to take that forward. He's been easy to work with on that side, hasn't given us any issues about using, currently using that property. So it is the right thing, I think, for us to do to acquire that piece of property and move forward with being able to do that. So take any questions you may have.
Question for the attorney. He's going to give us a general warranty deed. The reason I'm asking is I'm familiar with that area, and I never could find a deed for who owned it. So if he's going to give us a general warranty deed, we're okay.
I honestly don't know what kind of a warranty he's going to give you. I haven't heard. Did you discuss that with him?
Well, we take a special warranty. Quick claim we may have talked about. Sir?
Well, at least get a special warranty.
Okay, all right.
Any other question?
I don't know. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Another one of these sides, right? Okay. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Six one, Katie. All right, Katie, you're up on item number 11, the Planning Board Appointed for Bath.
The Planning Board is looking for an appointed representative from the area of Bath. We currently don't have anybody that's offered to do so, but we are currently looking for one. Does any of you have a nomination or a person that might be interested in that?
Question. Does the person need to live outside of the town of Bath since they have their own planning board, and this is the county?
When I asked about it, and I was looking at those statutes, it says from the area of Bath.
From the area of Bath.
Yes, it didn't specify it had to be from the town of Bath, or I think a mailing address that says Bath would be...
Well, we've had problems in the past when people have lived within municipalities and served on planning boards. Bath's a particularly hot area. When things go bad, they stay bad. So we really need somebody that lives outside the town limits of Bath.
So probably Bath township is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay. When we had the planner here, I asked, and I struck at just about every time I asked. So does anyone else have? We don't have any applications or...
I don't have any applicants, and I actually asked Jamie from the Mideast if she had any ideas, and I contacted down there. So nobody wants to volunteer.
Tell you the truth, I don't even know who on our planning board now.
We'll probably get somebody just from this meeting, publicity from this meeting.
All right.
It's my understanding from the last planning board meeting, they had the chairman said that that position had been vacant for a while, and they were certainly hoping to get it filled, so we're trying to beat the bushes a little bit.
I think it's been vacant since Star Cradle resigned, or I guess resigned. All right, we'll move to item number 12, the 2018 NACO Conference Vote and Delegate. Katie?
Every year when you go to your annual NACO conference, this one has to be a national, we require a voter and a person, just in case that person's not available, to be able to pass votes as the delegate for Beaufort County.
I'd like to nominate Chairman as the delegate and the alternate as the vice chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Anybody opposed?
No, you got my best. You got my best.
Okay. All right, we're down to item number 13, the Resolution in Support of Senate Bill 781. In your package on page 420, you have the comments as it relates to, I'm sorry, I got the wrong page. This was the handout that was at your place tonight. Senator Bill Cook introduced Senate Bill 781 on May 31, 2018, and a copy of the bill is attached. The bill, if enacted, would phase out the property tax exclusion for non-residential solar systems by the year 2021, but would retain the 80% exclusion for residential solar systems. And at this time, I'll read you the resolution. This is in support of North Carolina Senate Bill 781 phasing out the solar energy electric system property tax exclusion, whereas North Carolina General Statute 105-27545 designate solar energy electric systems as a special class under Article 5, Section 2-2 of the North Carolina Constitution, and excludes from taxation 80% of their appraised value and. Whereas Beaufort County on January 1, 2017, had solar facilities located in the county with an approximate appraised value of $125,551,000, which if fully taxed at the fiscal year 1617 rate of 55 cents per hundred evaluation, it would have produced $690,532 in revenue. And whereas due to the solar facility's designation as a special tax class by the North Carolina General Assembly, only 20% of the appraised value, or $25,110,000, is allowed to be taxed by the county producing a revenue of $138,106, a difference of $552,426 and. Whereas Senator Bill Cook represents Beaufort County in the North Carolina Senate, and on May 31, 2018, introduced Senate Bill 781, a bill to be entitled an act to phase out the solar energy electric system property tax exclusion and require the property tax revenue be used for schools. And this is where I want to add three words there, actually four. We would insert for schools, safety, repairs, and construction. Whereas Senate Bill 781, if enacted, would phase out the property tax exclusion for non-residential solar systems by 2021, but would retain the 80% exclusion for residential solar system. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners supports the passage of Senate Bill 781 and directs that a copy of this resolution be sent to the North Carolina Legislative Delegation and all 100 counties in North Carolina, adopt to this the fourth day of June 2018.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One thing, in adding those couple of words, what's quoted there is the actual title of the bill from what he submitted. So if you were to add that, that's not necessarily part of the title.
Oh, okay. In the bill itself, he's going to specify what is to be used for.
It does, and you've got a copy of that. It talks about it being used, including measures taken to improve or harden school structures for safety purposes and associated debt service, as well as construction of, repairs, annual renovations to school property and facilities.
Okay.
So are you okay with that language?
Yeah.
Because that was just the title of the bill in that resolution.
Right, but no.
So all the tax revenue from solar panels that go to schools and safety.
The idea would be, the reason, he called and told us about it the other day, and he doesn't think, I mean, it's obviously been referred to the Rules Committee, which is where bills go to die. So he doesn't think that there's much opportunity of it getting out, but in an effort to try to gain some support with it, he said, "Take the funds that you would receive and put them towards schools." He was hoping that that may bring some folks along.
It brought me along.
It would require a little bit of paperwork on our part, but that's easy to do, it's just calculations.
As you can see the numbers and compare it to our budget workshop numbers, it's almost enough to pay for the school resource officers, or at least to relieve the pressure on some of the other issues with the school funding. Any other discussion? We got a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second. Okay, any other discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor supporting the resolution for Senate Bill 781, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you very much. We are down now to our budget discussion. We are open for a motion to approve the budget or to open up the discussion on the recommended budget. Let's talk about it. All right. I'm assuming that when you say talk about it, that we'll do something very similar to what we did in the budget workshop, where we bring up an item and then we don't have to have a second, we just, somebody makes a suggestion, and then we'll have a straw vote to see if it moves forward in the budget process. Is that...
That's fine.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would suggest that we're beyond that because you've had the budget hearing. At this point, you're beyond discussion of the budget. I think things should be voted up or down because you're into the budget can be approved at any time, once that is over with.
Okay.
Having a discussion and a straw vote is, that takes us back to budget preparation. We're beyond budget preparation.
Well, you want to make a motion to approve the budget or to not approve it?
No, I'm just talking about the procedure. The procedure is when you put an item up, I don't think we can do a straw vote and call it. I think you need to vote it to be included in the proposed budget or not to be included in the proposed budget.
To come back at next Monday night.
Whenever you decide you want to approve the budget.
Okay.
But I don't think you can do a straw vote that can be changed because you've got a formal document that's under consideration in writing, and it needs to be solidified.
All right. We'll do it by a motion and second and a formal vote on each item. Is that...
Yeah, that's what I'm going at. Yeah, on each item that you want to change.
All right. Who wants to start first?
I'll start first.
All right.
So we're looking at the proposed budget that's in the briefing book. It's in our briefing room. Are we looking at option two?
Well, you're looking at anything that you want to, any amendment that you want to change to the managerial budget and what was brought to us tonight.
Okay.
So any item there or any additional items that you want to add or take away?
Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to eliminate, uh, one item, and then to make a motion to add an item into the...
No, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do one, one item at a time. So, what's your first motion?
Yeah. Okay. My first motion is to eliminate a, uh, item for the lobbyist that we have. We pay the lobbyist $36,000 a year, plus lobbying fee for his, his license, and also plus expenses. And we have in hand an association of the National Association of County Commissioners, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, which we pay $5,500 a year. That gives us a specific savings of value-added services of $36,732. So, what I'm saying is, we're paying for a lobbyist, probably one of the few counties in the state that has a lobbyist, 36 plus, 36,000 plus expenses. We have an association who does lobbying for us, and we're only paying $5,500 a year, plus the association gives us added value services, which is valued at a net of $36,000 a year. So, in effect, we're getting value services, and if you take off the 36, the $5,536,000, we're actually saving an awful lot of money. And I still don't see any need for lobbyists. We get detailed reports on a weekly basis. Since January, I've been getting one to two emails a week, uh, from the association. And so, to me, we're saving actually, uh, almost $30,000 a year, which going with the association, plus the added value services that we get, that we're not paying an extra dime for. So, I see no reason why we need a lobbyist. And I've heard, well, he makes phone calls for us. Well, I went to a meeting in Washington. Katie set up all the appointments. Our clerk set up those appointments. So, I don't see what services he provides for what we're paying him, when we have the same services provided by our association, which is saving, which is only costs us $5,500, plus the value-added services of $36,000. So, that's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second? I'll, I'll second that motion. So, any, any comments? Let's take, let's take a vote. If there's no comments. All right. Those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Oh, you're ready.
Carrie?
Okay. My next, um, motion is to add to the, uh, expansion that we have is $5,000 for the North Carolina extrarere. To me, this is an economic facilitator in, in the county. Uh, in, in 2018, well, 2016, they had actual visitors, visits of 15,000 people. In 2017, they had 16,000. Uh, in 2018, they projected 17,000. But more important, we've had visitors from 46 other states, 87 North Carolina counties, and 16 foreign countries. People that are coming into the county and spending money, uh, and, which benefits the county in the long run. And we're currently giving 15,000. I'd like to give a one-time addition to that of 5,000. That's my motion.
Is that, is that reoccurring?
No. One time.
Okay. Is, is there a second to that? If not, it dies, and we'll move to the next person.
The, the only item I have for discussion is to make a decision on higher heights. I mean, I went into the thing and supported giving them the property based on that we were not going to, uh, give them their $20,000 donation, their annual donation. But the property's worth, well, it stands right now, probably worth 160, 180,000 anyway. Sure, it needs some improvements, but I, I thought that would, was to get us out of this whole ball of wax. So, I move that we not give the stipend to higher heights of $20,000 this year, because we're, we've given them much more than that entitled to property that they can use to get grants and to borrow money with.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that. Any, any other comments?
Yeah, I got a little something to say.
Now, this is on higher heights?
Yeah, I got. Uh, we discussed this at the budget meeting one, one day last week, and I agreed to, to cut that, go ahead and give them the property, and cut their budget to $10,000, not 20.
Okay. Well, we got, you want to do an amendment?
I want to amend, because, you know, if it fails, they, they'll get the whole thing.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, we got a motion and a second to take that out of the manager's budget. All those in favor of that, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Oh, I'm opposed to it.
Okay, so, four, that I counted right, four? Or you two voted for it?
What was, to take it out?
To take it out. We had two votes. I counted two. All right.
Is it the 20 or the 10?
20. We're, we're working on the 20. No amendments in this process.
And I'd like to make a motion that we cut, cut the 20,000 to 10,000.
All right.
Also higher heights. And I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion to reduce it to 10. We got a motion and a second discussion. All right, let's vote. All those in favor of the reduction, raise your right hand. All right, moving. Nina, you got, you getting that in your?
Thanks, sir.
Excel spreadsheet up there?
We're going from 20 to 10.
Okay. All right, who wants to be next?
Let me ask you this as a procedural matter.
Yes, sir.
I have some motions that, that, they pertain to money, but they don't particularly pertain to exact dollar amounts. Is this the time to make those?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand you, Hood.
Well, you're, you're taking motions to adjust the dollar amounts on things on, in the budget. I have, uh, two motions that go to how the money in the budget can be used overall. Is this the time to do that?
Let's, let's, let's save that until after we go.
Okay. As long as I have an opportunity. I don't want to lose the opportunity.
You, you going to remind me?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, sir. Okay. Who wants to be next? All right, I, I'll make a motion that, uh, we drop the implementation of the salary and classification study that had been approved, uh, that related to a cost of a two-cent tax increase.
Second.
All right. Motion, second. Any discussion? Okay, those in favor of that, raise your right hand. Who are you opposed?
I'm voting to remove the salary study. Yeah, I'm voting for that.
All right. Now, I would recommend that, uh, that be replaced with the 2% quota for the employee. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Got a second discussion?
How does that come up, dollar wise?
Uh, the number we had in the budget workshop, unless it's changed, is 371,760. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
And what was the?
2%. Any, any other question? Okay, all those in favor of, uh, the 2% quota? Those opposed? Okay. All right. Any, anyone else?
Well, I'm, I'm just making a comment. Uh, your big money items, such as the resource officers, there's no way around it. I think you're pretty much stuck with those. That's, I don't think you can take that away.
Well, for resource officers, I don't see why we don't do a study of how to make the schools safer without putting additional resource officers. There are plenty of schools across the United States that, that have security of the building envelope itself. And by that, I mean, most of the doors are only exit doors. There's only one way in. You have to pass through a metal detector to get in. Uh, there's cameras. Uh, these are items that, once they're paid for, they're not recurring expenses. Resource officers are very expensive items, and once they're in there, they're going to get into an office, and two years from now, they're all going to be sitting there watching TV and playing games on the computer. So, we need, uh, we need, I think we need to take a look at doing this in a smart way, instead of, uh, instead of just throwing money at it.
This is your opportunity to make a motion to take it out right now and see it. So...
Well, okay, I move that we take out the, the resource officers, and that we replace it with a study of each of our facilities as to how to make it safe.
Okay.
And that we, we can appropriate, you know, you can put some money in the budget, let's say, let's say $100,000 for those studies, uh, as a budget item. We don't have to spend the $100,000, but we make it a budget item. And those studies can begin right away.
Okay. You want me to say that again? We had to take it in too. We got to take it out, and then you put it back in.
Okay.
If it goes through the process.
All right. Then my motion is to remove the, the additional resource officers from the schools.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Not at me.
If not, that dies. Do you want to make a motion to do a study too?
No, I'm not a fool.
All right. Okay, uh, I'd like, I'd like to add one more, uh, that being the Sydney Dive Team. I've had, uh, had a call from, uh, one of the, uh, members of the Sydney Dive Team. If I understand it correctly, we've been at $10,000 for them for the last, maybe 10 years. Uh, their request was that they would like to see that increased by $5,000 on a reoccurring, not just a one-time, but reoccurring because of insurance and other costs that, uh, has gone up on them. Uh, so I've moved that we, uh, increase their funding by $5,000. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a second. Any, any discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of adding an additional $5,000 to the Sydney Dive Team, raise your right hand. Those opposed?
Three.
Okay, that fails. All right. This is your, your last call. Or any additions or deletion?
I have some questions.
Is it, let's, let's, let's see if there any, if anybody else has got one they want to take out or add, and then we'll come back to you and Hood for, because he's got some comments. Let's take care of it. This is your last call to either take out or add an additional?
Well, you ain't say the penny yet.
Here's 61 and a half.
61 and a half. So, we've saved, we've gone from 63 down to 61 and a half.
What about, so all the rest of these things stay in though? The ones we didn't address?
Uh, yes.
Oh, pennies.
Because they were, they were in the numbers that we had given, uh, the staff.
What did we take out that was as much as a million dollars?
We took out that study.
The study?
Pay study.
Study was 1.2?
Oh, but I thought you replaced it with a 2%?
We did.
Then how much was that again?
371.
Oh, okay. I got you. All right.
Maybe I should have voted for that.
Did you get that, Randy? Good job. All right. Now, uh, who wants to go first?
I just want to ask the question.
Yeah.
And, and I'm still having a problem with those four jailers.
Detention.
Detention officers. The thing that, the question that I have, and maybe Charlie can help me make my decision. The question that I have is that we are thinking that we have to have them. Nobody has told us yet that we have to have them. And if we do have to have them, as I asked you the other night, if it take us one year to hire one officer, how long would it take us to fulfill those four positions, if the money is there?
I don't think that it takes a year, or takes more than a year to hire a detention officer. You know, we've hired several detention officers over the course of the years.
But they won't stay.
It's just, you know, one will stay.
Yeah.
One will leave. We'll hire in more. Um, we had two openings as of two and a half months ago, and we've got two people that are going through the background process. And if everything works out, then we'll have those hired in. But I, I don't think that's any different than any other FTE that we have.
Well, I'm not being offensive. I just want to know to help me make a decision. No, it's not any different than any other, than any other. But, but if, but my question was, nobody's, if we'll never meet compliance, then what do we, what is our alternative? We can't meet compliance if, if they quit in every two years or every two months. What, what is our alternative? If we're out of, and you're right, we're out of compliance with the four that, that told us we had to have, the mandate that we have. But what is our alternative if we don't keep those four positions free? Is there any penalty or anything?
I would say that as long as we can maintain the FTEs within one or two vacancies, then we can stay in compliance.
I got you.
But if they're, if we're one short on an FTE per shift, then there's no way that we can comply.
But just clarify that, Commissioner Booth. We are in compliance now, because that rule has not come into effect yet.
Well, we wasn't, well, we're in compliance, because there was no rule saying we had to make those changes that Chief was telling us about last week.
We are anticipating that in December.
But we're anticipating that in December.
Yes, sir.
And we, if we just, and he just hired, and still going through the process of hiring two more now. So, that means that the two that you're hiring now, that would give you your full staff that you haven't had since when.
As, as a snapshot. But there are also been times where we would have one opening, and we would get four or five qualified applicants that we could select that one.
Okay.
You know, so we, we haven't had a, a talent pool deficit when it comes to looking for people. It's just a matter of the timing and how many openings we have at the time.
I understand. And that's the reason, that's the reason I've been having a problem with it. I just want to make sure that if we allocate four new detention officers, bring us in compliance, that we are in compliance. Not to try to hamper your job or ruin your job, but I just want to make sure we are in compliance.
Yes.
Yes.
Where are we on our phone dial?
Well, while she's looking that up, uh, just for the people that are in the audience, during the budget workshop, uh, we reduced that number on detention from 200 down to 150 because of the fact that, uh, they're not going to be employed for the whole 12 months. So, that'll give us a head start trying to, to recruit and get those interviews in. Uh, so hopefully, we'll be in good position if, if that rule takes place.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't want to start a controversy. You know me. But I read that law that these guys are talking about, is you don't need an additional, uh, employee on each shift, based upon the law, because you're supposed to be making two rounds on the, in, through the whole jail every hour. All the law says, as, as the, uh, Chief Deputy has explained is, you can be in compliance with that law by making a round at 101, and then 58 minutes later, you can make another round, and you're in compliance with the law. What the law does... What the law does is it says you can't do that. It says that, that the rounds cannot be closer or further than 35 minutes apart. So, it says you're supposed to be making regular rounds. You don't need another employee to do that. The one you've got should be doing his job.
Well, we, we've had that discussion during the budget workshop.
That was not, that wasn't my intention to say that it wasn't doing a job. My intention was to help me clarify.
Well, I understand, but, but what I'm, my argument is you don't need four new employees. The employees you have can comply with the proposed law.
Well, the problem, the problem that I have, I, I don't go to the jail, these people have to work in there. The problem that I have is, I feel the same way about the, about the chief people as I do our children going to school. If I make a mistake, I want to make it on the side of safety. And, and that's the reason I asked the question, Mr. Chairman. I, I would hate for Chief to send us a letter that, that was a detention officer beat to death inside that jail. I, I don't want to hear that kind of stuff. As far as the funny math and where you went to college and all that stuff, we had to learn how to count. I don't want to count bodies. That is, that is my position. I don't want him to have to call us and tell us that one of our detention officers got beat to death because he was inside of a cell. And, and that was my intention of asking the question. It wasn't to say who wasn't working and who should be working. I'm trying, and I was taught if I make an error, make it on the side of safety.
And, and I, I think both of you have got some good comments, but, you know, the pressure at the state level as it relates to county jails as well as state prisons is, they're understaffed, and people are getting hurt, employees, and then we're losing inmates. So, you know, everything has been heightened. I, I don't know whether it's going to go into effect in December or not, but I think we, and it's our job to budget for it, because it's earmarked, and if it does not come down, we're not going to spend the money.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Two, number, number one, I was, I appreciate what Commissioner Booth said. I was making, my statements are based on, I don't think, I agree with Commissioner Langley. I don't think anybody's dumb enough to have officers going in jails, you know, to essentially put their hands on, and cells to put their hands on people. I don't think that part of it will happen, but I do think the part will happen about the 35 minutes between the, the visits, and if they have to go into jail cell, yeah, you're going to need more help. But if it's just the 35 minute thing, you don't need more help to meet that part, because a guy's supposed to already be doing that now. So, that's, and I, I think we should wait and see what they come down with, see what the exact language is, then we can all look at the language and see what we've got to do and, and make adjustments to do it. And I don't mind taking the money for the last half of the year out of fund balance to do it. We need to be in control of this. If you budget this money, it doesn't matter what the state decides, the staff is going to go out and hire four more people. I don't want to do that unless they're needed.
You have an answer.
Fund balance, about 15.3 million or 26 and a half percent?
Well, my, my reasoning, and this is, and I'm not going to, it was Commissioner Booth's conversation that prompted me to, to say this, because what I'm, what I'm thinking is that we can afford to, if it necessarily came to, to take this $150,000 out of fund balance. That's right. At the appropriate time if we really need it. And so, therefore, you can, I'm thinking we can just scratch, scratch this out of the budget. But you, you tell me if I, if I'm thinking wrong.
I think you have enough fund balance to do that. I think the question, and, and I would ask Charlie his opinion on that, is he has an officer, his, his detention center supervisor, his jail administrator sits on that committee, and it's her belief that it's going to pass. Now, it may not pass with all the, all the pieces that they currently have, but my understanding from them is it's going to pass, that the time limit is going to decrease. The question is, how fast can Charlie and his folks react so that we're not out of compliance? Now, you know, I don't want to put Charlie on the spot, but, I mean, if they pass it, here's the scenario is what I think. If they pass, if we wait until the last minute and they say, yes, we're going to do that, then we would come to the board and say, now you need to appropriate funding for the second half of the year, and then Charlie's got to start finding somebody. So, we would be paying overtime for other officers to cover that slot during the time it took us to find someone. Is that pretty much, I mean, we, they'll cover it, they'll make sure we're in compliance, but we'll pay for it one way or the other, correct?
Correct.
Most of the time, they give us plenty of time to be in compliance with these things. I mean, I can't, I can't imagine the state saying you got to be in compliance tomorrow. They never do that.
It, it's been out there for the last six months, and they've said December.
And it, my understanding is it's a change from existing regulation, and the, the state just has to bless it, but it's a regulation which means the effective date in the, even the document says December 18th. That's, looks like it could be the effective date if the state blesses, state legislative body.
If, if what you want to do, you want to do, we can certainly do that. It's just, we're going to, I mean, there'll just be some additional cost on the other side, and, and they can work it out.
Well, I, I mean, I don't have a problem with, I was looking at the timeframe. Like I said, and like I said, I don't want him to have to call us one morning and say we had a fatality last night. I, I'd have to leave this, this, this place right here.
Right.
So, I, 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 my comments about looking at it further down the road, I was just trying to look at the timeframe for filling the positions. I really, as I say it again, if I make a mistake, I want it to be on the side of safety.
Well, what I would also say to this board is that our jail is in compliance now for the first time in a long, long time, based on the efforts that this board has put in place to fix things that are down there. Um, and it, it is certainly our intention, and I know it's, it's the Sheriff's Office intention, to keep it in compliance.
All right.
And, um, but, but they will need your assistance in doing that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Part of the problem with appropriating money at this time is we don't know what we're appropriating money for. Anybody that's ever been to the legislature and seen a bill go back and forth knows that this bill is going to go in looking like it's been presented to us, and then it's going to go back and forth, and you don't know what it's going to look like when it comes out.
Commissioner Richardson, it's not a bill. This isn't at the General Assembly. This is in the, the administrative side through DHHS. Yes, sir. It's through DHHS.
Well, still, I'm going to wait and see what we're appropriating money for, because we don't know what we're appropriating money for right now.
I'll make a motion and leave it in.
Well, we don't, we don't need a motion to leave it in, we need a motion if somebody wants to do that, to take it out.
No, no, I ain't going to do that.
I didn't think it was in there at all. It is in there?
Yeah.
I think for planning, Mr. Chairman, I think for planning purposes, we have to leave it.
Yeah.
And in fact, it was, it was cut.
Yeah.
My only concern with it is, and we've discussed this the other night, we hit base on one day, if we, if we take that money out, then it puts Charlie in a bind as far as, as locating officers and putting them in place. If we, if we go ahead and put that money in the budget and just earmark it for when that bill is done, then if, if they don't do it, then we'll make the money back out. But I think it ought to be in the budget, I think we ought to budget forward anyway.
Here, here again, we need to make sure that the record shows it's not a bill, it's, it's a rule, and it's been published for six months. Is that, I think it's been six months.
It's a change to an existing rule.
It's revisions of not just 14J, but pretty much everything under the umbrella of DHHS, that part of it is the jails, and that's the first revision that 14J has had in almost 20 years.
Okay, this is, this is last chance, anyone want to take it out? If you do, make a motion. Okay? It stays in. Thank you. Chief. All right. Commissioner Richardson.
Okay, I've got, I have two motions. One of them is, this is to be included in the text of the budget ordinance, and it says, "Personal use of county property. No part of the money is appropriated in this budget may be used for the personal benefit of any county employee other than for salaries, expenses, and expenses that are submitted and justified on forms signed by the employee and approved by another designated county official." Second paragraph, "No person in the Sheriff's Office may use county property or vehicles other than to use assigned vehicles to go directly to and from his place of employment to his home upon the approval of the Board of County Commissioners." This gets into this, this problem of the sheriff saying that he can use county property any way he wants to, however he wants to. I don't have a problem with the practice of deputies driving a car home and driving a car back to work, but I think we, we need to cut off the use of the county budget for the personal benefit of any county employees.
Okay, you've made a motion.
Got a motion.
All right, is there a second to his, his motion? If not, that one dies.
All right, second motion. Included in this ordinance by reference is the ring-bound book titled on its cover, Buffett County Annual Budget Physical Year 2018-2019. And the reason for this is, we need that in there by reference because it's, it is the source material that the budget was made up from. It's a reference. The budget, for those of you that don't know, is only about four pages long, and, and it's supposed to be an ordinance, and it really doesn't have a whole lot of teeth in it.
It's a law, it's an ordinance, there is, there are teeth in it.
How many pages is submitted for the, for the proposed budget ordinance in, in this book? I'm counting, one, two, three pages. How are you going to get all that detail that we've talked about and that we've submitted into an ordinance? It's not there.
The, the budget is formulated at a functional level, and it's in accordance with the statutes and the way you put them together. I mean, if, if you want to, if you want to budget, we bring back to you under that ordinance any changes to the budget, and you have to make amendments to that budget. So, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure.
But the detail that we have used is not in the ordinance.
And I don't think you've ever done that, ever.
But it's not.
And I don't think anybody across the state of North Carolina does that.
Well, I think we should do that.
Because it's not, the budget ordinance's purpose to count paper clips. I mean, it's just.
You're not counting paper clips, you've got line items that are in there that have cost, code numbers with them.
We, we adopt our budget on the, on the functional level. If you'd like for us to do something different than that, we can go back and redo the budget ordinance, but you have to do the budget ordinance on the level at which you adopt it.
Well, what the public needs to be aware of is you've got three pages here that doesn't have very much to do with expenditures, it only has to do with the collection of tax monies, and consequently, staff or anybody else can change anything they want to, anytime they want to, code anything to any place that they want to.
And, and if there's an insinuation there's something wrong with that or something illegal about that, it's, you're incorrect, and, and to say that staff does things inappropriately is incorrect as well.
I didn't say that.
It's what you implied.
I said, staff could do that, and, and, and is that not true?
Anytime the budget ordinance is changed, it comes back to the board for an amendment. Yes, there are opportunities.
But I've got one question that has to do with the collection of revenues and nothing to do with the, with the expenditures, no reference to expenditures by a line item or budget item. I'm not accusing of anything. I'm using my fiduciary responsibility as a county commissioner to make sure the money of the taxpayers of Buffett County is protected.
And that's what the budget ordinance does, Commissioner Richardson. I mean, if you will look at Section 21, it talks about how items are allowed to be moved, the finance officer has the ability to do that, that's so that the budget can be worked and appropriately followed.
Those items are never defined in this budget, are they?
Those items?
Those items, when you say move items, those items are never defined in the budget.
Section 21 on page 33.
Section 21 says appropriations may be amended. What appropriations from?
As follows, keep reading.
Keep reading.
As follows, "The finance officer is hereby authorized to move money within single departments between items." Well, where are those items in this budget? The answer is they're not in this budget that we're passing by ordinance. They're in the source documents that were used that the commissioner sat up here and looked at. I mean, I'm, I'm not accusing you of anything, but this is an interesting conversation from the standpoint of doing budgets, because everybody thinks the budget is done by ordinance. The only thing that's done by ordinance is the collection of money is done by ordinance because you have to have a law to levy taxes. You can't just go out and take people's money without an ordinance to do that. There is nothing in here that says how the money is to be spent. Now, I'm not accusing, I've watched this for several years, and I've thought about this back and forth, and that's, that's one of the hazards of serving 22 years. You've been on here 22 years, you begin to figure out some things. And I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything dishonest or illegal, I'm just pointing out a flaw in this great so-called government system that we have, which is really very flimsy, other than we've got the strong arm of the police to take your money.
Actually, Commissioner Richardson, a budget ordinance appropriates expenditures. You can't spend money without there being a budget and a budget ordinance allowing you to spend that.
Where are the items?
If you look in section, in section one, where it talks about that it is distributing among the following functional areas, that is where those funds are being spent, in those functional areas.
And that's the only thing in this budget that's regulated by law, is those major items, $6 million for general government, $16 million for human services, 1.6 million for community services, 18 million for education. It is lump sum items. It is not a budget in the sense that it is a budget by ordinance. And I, I'm not accusing the manager, he comes to us for changes and all that sort of thing, but what I'm saying is, the door is, is open here, and the budget has a great weakness in it, and I'm pointing out that weakness.
Okay, you, you did make a motion, right?
Yep.
Okay, is there a second to his motion, now that we've had that discussion? It dies.
I'll put that one in motion.
Okay. Is there anything else that we need to address, Brian or Anita, as it relates to giving you information that you need to come back?
Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, so, I, no, I think we're fine with what we've got. We will bring you back an amended face sheet that shows the changes, we will bring you back an amended budget ordinance, and we will, we will bring you back an amended budget book, if you tell us you aren't going to make any more changes. I mean, all, because if you do, then we'll just have to go another week, and we're happy to do that, but.
Okay.
But if they're going to be, if they're, if, if you anticipate additional changes, then we've got to rework the stuff, because you have to have the document in front of you to, to vote on it. So, we, we know where we are right now.
Okay, we're looking at next Monday night is the earliest that we?
You have a meeting already scheduled for Monday night.
Okay.
A special call meeting to adopt the budget.
At 5:30.
That's correct.
That's in the administrative bill. Any, anything else that we need to discuss as it relates to the budget? That's my wife's birthday, so I, I don't want to have to come to that meeting and stay until 8:10 that night.
Pretty much, stay till 1:00.
Until 1:00. Well, we can stay till 1:00 tonight would be my preference, if you've got anything else, Commissioner Booth.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I second that motion.
All right, we got a motion, and then a second. All those in favor of adjourn, raise your right hand. Was that unanimous?
Yes.
Okay, good.